Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Farmington Town Council meeting and ask you to join us for the pledge.
(Applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
I'd like to begin tonight by saying, welcoming, giving a congratulations to the Farmington High School Boys Basketball Team who won the States this past weekend. And I just want to say congratulations, and we will be bringing them here, and you'll be able to congratulate them yourselves at a later date. So, congratulations to the basketball team, the boys, and their coach, and all the staff. So, excuse me. At this time, I'd like to ask for any public comment. If anyone would like to, you come up to the podium and give us your name and your address, and address the council for five minutes.
Good evening. Matt Huckagner for Deepwood Road. By looking at tonight's agenda, assuming the motion passes, I'm encouraged that the Farmington High School Building Project will officially begin. The past project was the past project, and everyone should use what we learned from that effort to put our best foot forward. The high school is in desperate need of a comprehensive solution, and I feel hopeful one will be found for all residents of town. Looking through the agenda, I noticed there was an option to price out maintaining the current FHS facility, otherwise known as the new nothing option. I think this option will be a very valuable communication tool to highlight the need for a comprehensive solution for the high school. I also think energy efficiency operating savings should be highlighted as much as possible. I know there's mention of that in the statement of need, but energy efficiency cost savings would have a real bottom line impact to the town budget. Think it would, again, be a very helpful number to highlight the benefits for this project. Also, my other thought about highlighting the value of this project was more indirect. I'm not sure this would be a charge of the building committee, but I do think there is a number or economic value to the town with a renovate or new high school facility. Not only will every realtor use a new or renovated high school as a selling point, they could also use a failing facility as a way to steer people away from Farmington. That probably won't help home prices or the grand list. Plus, there could be an economic value around new programming the high school could offer or increase continuing education courses that might not be possible today. Maybe this is something our Economic Development Commission could study. My final thought, I attended the recent high school student performance of The Little Mermaid, and I was blown away by the talent of the students. The acting, singing, and stage design were great. They did an incredible job, and can't wait to see what future students have in store. I make this comment because the only issue with the performance was the lackluster state of the auditorium facilities. The skill and dedication the students put into that performance should be matched by the residents' commitment to finding a solution for the high school. I'm a taxpayer that's willing to pay for a solution. I hope others are as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Quikendall, 15, Whispering Road, Unionville. First of all, I'd like to say that a lot of work went into this plan, and it is rather complex, which I think you'll probably be talking about, but it represents a lot of work, and it reminds me of how much work is done around here by volunteers. Most of you are volunteers. It's one of the strong points of this town. There's a couple of things I wanted to mention. One, there comes a time when consultants or architects may be engaged, and I'm not sure whether that is synonymous with hired early on, and this work is usually done by RFPs, request or proposal, but the range of the options is so large, I wonder how many companies would do this for nothing, which what they usually do when they submit a proposal. There's also, I would only say, there are times that I can't figure out exactly when decisions will be made, so I would be interested in hearing how that flows. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. Madam Chair, going back to the original Tecton review in 2014, this will be the fifth High School Building Study Committee the council has sponsored in the last five years. As part of its charter, this new committee should be required to report back to the council on a quarterly basis whatever costs are being incurred on the latest endeavor. Despite the many volunteers who may be involved, a lot of paid staff time gets consumed by these building committee efforts. So, in addition to our payments to outside consultants, owner reps, architects, engineers, we should be recording our internal personnel costs associated with the project. For instance, over the coming year, if 10% of the superintendent's time is spent on the building committee, that would be $25,000. If one day a week of Tim Harris is spent on the building committee, that would be 20% of his fully burden headcount. If meeting support clerical assistance is supplied by CAT, it would be whatever hours over time associated with that. So, there'll be other miscellaneous expenses, meeting refreshment, et cetera, but I think it's fair for the people of Farmington to see what we are spending here, both internally as well as externally. Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Before we begin, I just want to say that I'm really proud of this council and the Board of Ed. We heard you loud and clear. We heard the public when we had our meeting, and the public wanting us to get going and move, which we all want. We know this is a very, very important project, and that's why we're here tonight, to move this forward. We generally don't meet the second meeting in March because we've met many, many nights doing budget, and even days, Saturday all day, is one of the points. So, I just want to let you know in the public, we're listening, and that's why we're here, and we want to get this going. So, I, we appreciate your input, and we'll move forward tonight. So, Bruce.
Madam Chair, I move to perform the following action pertaining to the Farmington High School Building Project in accordance with the Chapter 53 Public Buildings of the Farmington Town Code. One, appoint the Farmington High School Building Committee consisting of the following voting members: Megan Guerrero, Chair; Ellen Sayudis, Board of Education Member; Chris Fagan, Board of Education Member; Michael Smith, Resident; Garth Meehan, Resident; John Carrier, Resident; Sharon Mazoki, Resident; and the following non-voting members: Beth Kitner, Town Counsel Liaison; Paul Cianci, Town Counsel Liaison; Kathleen Belansky, Town Manager; Kathleen Greeter, Superintendent; Scott Horace, Farmington High School Principal; Farmington High School Support Staff to be determined; Tim Harris, Farmington Public School Director of Facility; Vince LaFontaine, Farmington Public School Business Administrator; other town and Board of Education staff as needed; Kathleen Gorowski, Clerk of the Committee. Two, the charge of the Farmington High School FHS Building Committee in addition to the general responsibility included in Chapter 53 of the Farmington Code to complete the following tasks listed below as stated in Part 1 and Part 2.
Second.
Okay. Sure, Kathy. And we're going to have a presentation of how this process is going to unfold, excuse me, to make it a little clearer for the public.
Good evening. What I thought I would do is that I would try to go through the flow chart first and kind of just explain what I see as like the process and the logistics. As you guys are all aware, this is a new process, so I'm looking, when we've been putting this together with Nancy and Bruce, for comments, suggestions. If it doesn't seem to flow right, or something's missing, obviously, that's what we're looking for because we've never really done it this way. So, again, it's a new process for us, but I think that with the flow chart, and if you bear with me, we'll go through it, and then we'll go back to the original charge, and I think it will be clearer that way. So, well, that's a good start. Let's see. Hold on. All right, there it is. And there's copies in the back, and the council has copies too, so you guys can take a look at it. So, what we have is our flow chart, and so I'm assuming tonight that the council appoints your building committee. So, then what would happen is that the building committee would convene, and the first thing that they would do is that they would review the statement of needs, they would review the high school surveys, previous building committee information, Town of Farmington financial impact and forecasting documents, and other reference documents as needed in preparation for a proposal of a comprehensive building project. So, the committee would get together, and then they would meet, and they'd go through, do their due diligence. So, that would be the first thing they would do. Then the next thing I see is the logistics, is that the committees would create an RFP for multiple architectural firms to create initial design concepts for conceptual solutions for the following: maintaining the current Farmington High School facility, and again, in the past, we were calling that the do-nothing option, but we're changing that to maintaining the current Farmington High School facility; renovate the existing footprint of Farmington High School, include renovate, renovate with additions, renovate as new, et cetera; and completing a new building option on the existing Farmington High School site and other locations. So, the committee, based on the charge, we've said, we want to solicit architects to compete. That was one of the things that was talked about, that we want to have them compete. So, how are we going to have them compete? The thought was is that we'd go out for an RFP, and we'd say to all these different architect firms, we want you to come back with a price. What is it going to cost us to get three different designs, what I just described? And also, we need enough information that someone else can price how much that's going to cost. So, we need initial designs, and we need enough information that someone else is going to be able to price each one of those options. And my understanding from the council is that you want a third-party type of person that's going to do the price for you. So, my understanding from the industry, they're not going to do this for free. They're not going to do this for free. So, we're going to get, and let's say we get eight architectural firms that come in, and the committee's going to look at it, and they're going to give us prices about what it costs to do what I just described. The committee is going to vet those, vet the firms by qualification, they're going to vet the cost, and I anticipate that they're going to shortlist it because you probably, one, we don't have the budget to have 10 architects doing 10 different designs and pay for that, and also, logistically, that's just way too much. So, I wrote here, you would shortlist it to two on the flow chart, but I think the committee should have some flexibility about that if for some reasons there's three or something like that, but the concept is, is that it should be shortlisted. And then you have those firms, the committee then picks and says, Architect A and Architect B, go out and design three different designs. So, Architect A is doing three, and Architect B is doing three. Then they're off and running. Then the committee needs to get this third-party person who's going to price it. I've heard an owner's rep has done that type. A value engineering professional has done those types of things. An owner's rep usually does more than just price. It has a whole, they have usually, they're your representative for the whole process. So, it may be better that it's a value engineering firm that goes and does that. I don't know. This is something that would have to transpire, but I guess the point is, is that you're getting someone that comes in and that prices this for you. So, then the committee's going to have to go and interview, and they'll take the RFP for the owner's rep, and the owner's reps are going to come out, and they're going to give us a price. And they're going to say, it's going to cost us X dollars to price six different drawings, three from Architect A, three from Architect B. So, then the owner's rep is going to give us a price for that, the committee's. And then the committee's going to decide which owner's rep or third-party value engineering person is going to pick it. Then, once that's done, the architects are going to come back with their three options, three options. They're going to talk to the committee about them, and I think the committee, what I envision, is that the committees are going to go through the pros and cons and look at all these different things. And maybe there's some pros and ones, some cons, they may be mixed and matched, they may be some different things. But when we set up our contract, we're going to own those designs, they're going to be our designs, so that's, you can pick and choose some different things. I think that the architect is going to be looking to hopefully be getting the next stage of the project. So, again, when it comes back to cost, a lot of times these architects will, it won't be that, that expensive to do this because they're hoping that they're going to get the next phase of the job. And the one thing that we have to have in our contract is that, let's just say now we pick Architect A, we need to get to the schematics, which brings us to Phase 2 of our charge, is that according to our ordinance, to get to referendum, we don't need just initial designs, we need schematic designs, which is further along in the process. So, now the architect has brought to the committee initial design concepts, but part of the RFP process is going to be, we're going to have to know, if that architect gets picked, how much will it cost us to bring us to the schematic drawings? So, that's going to be part of the RFP process too. So, then, if we go back to our flow chart, I think I've hit it all. You're going to hit the RFP for the architects, then you have an owner's rep. The process for the RFP is that the architect to provide a price to give the committee initial design concepts for conceptual solutions that address the statement of needs, and provide enough information for an owner's rep to price. Then the RFP is going to, the RFP process, the owner is representing, is going to, or the value engineering professional is to provide a price to prepare pricing for each of the architect's initial design concepts for conceptual solutions of Farmington High School. So, once the architect presents options, and the owner rep has done the value engineering, and presents pricing to the committee, the committee then is going to present to the town council, who has the authority on the overall, who has the overall authority of the project scope and the cost of the project. So, then, they come, the committee then comes back to the town council. I see it giving pros and cons, they show the different options, the council's aware of it, and then we go to Part 2. And Part 2 is, that's the end of committee, this committee that you're pointing, that's the end of their charge. Now, Part 2 is, is the committee now recharges the building committee with an overall project scope and a range of the net municipal cost. And then the committee goes right to, completes Phase 1 Preliminary Plan Development per Chapter 53 4 of the Town Code. And really, what that is, is taking the initial concepts to schematic drawings with a price, a total price that then the council eventually would send to referendum. So, if you go back to the actual charge, I think, if we go to Part 1, the committee shall review the approved statement of needs and all the background, we talked about that, that after the review is complete, the committee shall engage multiple firms to generate competition and to get initial design concepts. I think we talked about the three different plans. That the pricing for options B1 through B3 shall be prepared for an owner's rep, value engineer professional, who shall be selected by the committee. The value engineer professional shall be retained by the committee and shall be independent of any firms that have, who have submitted a proposal, so we really want them completely independent. That after the architects have completed their plans, and after the owner's rep has completed their analysis of the proposed plans, the committee shall report the options to the town council, who shall have exclusive authority on the overall project scope and the cost of the project. That's the end of Part 1. And then that once the committee has reviewed the options presented by the, once the town council, excuse me, has reviewed the options presented by the committee and the preliminary pricing, it shall recharge the committee with an overall project scope and a range of the net municipal cost of the project with guidance from the owner's rep and preliminary pricing options. And then the committee shall complete Phase 1 Preliminary Plan Development through the town ordinance, and once Phase 1 Preliminary Plan Development is complete and the project is approved at the town meeting and referendum, the committee shall proceed with final, Phase 2 Final Design Development as described by the town ordinance. So, that's, I think, the charge, the basic part of the charge is Part 1, that's what the committee's charged to do, and then Part 2 is really what the council's going to do next, and that's recharging the committee with the overall scope and the net dollar amount. So, I hope that I made that clear, but that's, that's how it's written. So, I don't know if we have any questions. I could stand up here and try to answer them this way, or...
So, town council. Paul.
So, first off, I really like the chart because, you know, even though I know the charge has to formally come in words, this really does a good job of showing the flow over the next several months. There's, I mean, and I think this is really good. I know we've all put a lot into this, and I think this is really good. A couple of kind of suggestions that have come to me since this got printed that I just thought I'd throw out there to potentially tweak. One is, so the order of bringing in the design firms for competitive design and the owner's reps. I think it'd be useful to, if we switch those, the upside is, the owner's reps can then help our building committee select some of the design firms. I think they would still be able to provide a price, knowing that they're going to have to price out three conceptual designs, so I don't see a big downside, and I see it as more, they could be a resource to the building committee as they're going through that process. Something I just thought of over the last couple of days that, after this was printed, so that's why I kind of waited till now to bring it up. So, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on, I have a couple of other things, but I don't know if we should, if I should put them all out there first, or talk about them one at a time.
Let's see if there are any comments on that. Go ahead, Patty.
Paul, sorry. Paul, to clarify then, if I'm looking at Kathy's flow chart, would you be taking that third box in blue and moving it to make it the second box? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, I think we'd essentially flip the second and third boxes.
Yep.
To keep it simple.
Yeah, and the only thing that would be a little bit different would be that the owner's rep pricing for options would also be, they would be helping us do that.
Correct.
So, the price would be, it would include both of those.
And there would be, I guess one downside is there would be a little bit of cost with that.
Right, exactly.
Probably wouldn't be free, but I think, I think the value from that on a project of this magnitude would, would be helpful.
Yep. Go ahead. Follow. Is that something that needs to be incorporated into the charge, or would it just be a recommendation to the building committee?
I don't, you know, the flow chart is really the logistics of how you see it, so I think that that's in, in here. So, let me just read what it says about, she'll be selected by the, she'll be retained by the committee. Yeah, I think in the charge itself, it says that the pricing and the options shall be prepared by an owner's rep, so I think that, I think that's okay. I think it just, we just flipped, we just flipped this around.
I don't think that affects the, the charge. It doesn't.
Yeah. I agree. I just wanted to confirm.
Right.
Oh, that's better to clarify right now.
Yeah, I agree. The second one was, so, and for this, I think there's probably more discussion. So, I think initially, we send out an RFQ, or Request for Qualifications. A lot of firms could respond. Let's say eight or 10 firms respond, and then, I think, I don't know, but I think the state, if we go for state grant funding mandates, we shortlisted to four initially from the RFQ. Even if the state doesn't mandate that, I think it'd be a good idea to get it down to four, again, from a qualitative RFQ standpoint, and then get into the competitive design of, you know, and everything else we have here where, so those four would then give us, then we'd send out an RFP to, request for proposal to those four. They would provide their proposals, and then, you know, then we would do everything else you said, you know.
So, you're saying...
Shortlisted to two, and, you know, competitive designs from there.
So, you're saying, so you go out for a true RFQ, so they're not giving you any prices?
Correct.
The committee is shortlisting based on qualifications for people, solely on qualifications, and then they, then they go back and they have to give us a price of what I just described here.
And then, correct, and then would...
Then we shortlist them.
Shortlist it. I like your idea of shortlisting it to two. I don't want to have four firms coming up with conceptual designs, but I think shortlisting to two is good for that process, but A, we may have to go through that process, but even if we don't, you know, we should confirm if we do or not, but even if we don't, I just think it'd be, because we may start out with 10 firms, you know, I don't, who knows how many are going to reply, and to go from 10 to two could be tight. It might be easier to go 10 to four, and then four to two. So, but I'm happy to, I mean, there's pros and cons to that, so...
Wouldn't it depend on what the state is telling us as well? Is what you're telling us?
Yeah, and I don't know, I thought from prior experience...
I don't know the answer.
...that that was the case, and I don't know the answer. I could be mistaken there, so I don't, but, and even if it's not a requirement, I think, I just think it's a good idea anyways to do that, so...
I mean, we go, and I think in general, we somewhat go back and forth with this whole idea of RFQs versus RFPs. We, a lot of times merge them both together just for the fact that even if someone has really, really great qualifications, if they're so expensive...
Right.
We always put that proposal in there too, because no matter how great they are, we don't, would usually not take someone like that. But I think the fact that you have four of them going, I would just have some concern if we didn't get that many, and then how, then all of a sudden, you're just going on qualification, and we wind up bumping the price up a lot because of that.
Right.
So, I mean, I think, again, I don't think the charge has to be changed with this. I think that that could be something that the building committee could talk about, and that, and then we just, because I think that the building committee's going to need this table, that's what we're going to work off of, as long as it meets these things. And in the charge, it just says that you're hiring, getting an architect to get it.
Correct. So, I don't think we'd be changing the charge.
Charge, yeah.
I agree. And, and yeah, just to be clear, and I do think we should have an RFP to get it down to two. That process should not change. We absolutely need proposals to get to two. So, I think, I think that's all good. And then, the last one was just the word conceptual, and I know we had talked about it a little bit. The, the only thing I'm worried, and I think it's fine the way it is, honestly, the more I think about it, but that could mean different things, and one thing I would want the building committee to check with the owner's rep on is, is conceptual enough to get that pricing? I do think it is, because ultimately, and you hit the nail on the head, you know, we're not going to take this to full design and spend all that money just to get pricing. We're not going to have blank pieces of paper. So, the question is, what stage of that preliminary process do we want to base these competitive designs on? I think conceptual probably works.
Well, the two things, just so we got those, that language, we, but we tried to help ourselves because we called it design concepts for conceptual solutions, but we also put in the footnote that, but they also needed to give us enough information so it can be priced. Where I got that language was from was the first, was it Tecton?
Tectron.
Tectron report. That's what they called it in that report. They called it that, and there was pricing.
Conceptual.
So, that's why I called it the same thing, because they got the designs, and then they had pricing too.
From that, so...
So, that's why I called it that.
So, I think that's going to work fine, honestly. And yeah, although, I mean, I really like the flow of this flow chart, otherwise, so I think I'm good, otherwise. Someone else's.
Okay. Patty, sure. I agree with Paul, the flow chart was incredibly helpful.
Good.
Thank you. One of the questions I have is specifically with the charge, it's in Part 1 B3. It's the statement, completing a new building option on the existing FHS site and other locations. And my question specifically with the "and other locations" comment, there's a couple of factors here. One, it's my understanding that if there is a building to go on a different location, it's the town council's decision as to what that other location would be. It's how it's written in the ordinance. And so, I'm wary of when we have not talked about other locations, including something in the charge that is proposing other locations, in particular, because I don't know what a design firm could come back with. They could arguably look at something and say, all right, on the existing FHS site, I can only do this, but I'd rather propose you something on a random 10-acre site that gives you an idea of what we can do. And if another firm is coming back proposing a new building on another site, or a different character, or a different location, even if it's not a defined location, I'm concerned about comparing apples and apples or apples and oranges, because I'd like, I think it makes the most sense to be able to compare a new option, a new building option... makes the most sense to be able to compare a new option, a new building option on the existing site, at least for the purposes of this Part One, in comparison. I do understand that the location information, that it is a critical component of the community, that that was one of the concerns raised, that the building committee last time may not have considered other locations. I do think it would be worthwhile to add to the building committee's consideration to consider other potential locations, but for the, so that could potentially be in Part One, A. But I do think for the purposes of selecting bids or selecting proposals, we need to be able to give the people proposing the same information, so that way what we're getting back is comparable, if that makes sense.
Could, could I ask for some clarification?
Yes.
Okay. So I think what you're saying is that if you built a new building on a random location and they said to come back, it may not be apples to apples, because a new building may cost X, but we don't own the land, we don't know anything about that location, the council hasn't picked the location.
Right.
And it may not be, it may be difficult to compare apples to apples, because then people may like that location or like that number, and it may not be a realistic number, because we don't have the land, we don't have, you know, we haven't done anything with that. And then I thought what you were saying is, but the public has said, why haven't you looked at other locations? Maybe that, instead of going, that would be when you recharge the committee, that option should be looked at too. Is that it would be actually Phase Two of the recharge of the council? Is that when you, when the council does it, then say, this is, this is also going to be your scope? And then the council either has the discussion then, or we look at if there's other land or something, but it comes in the second part of the scope?
I had thought about it coming earlier, in case the building committee did come up with another parcel that then it could incorporate into whatever it was requesting for an RFP. But I don't know that it's particularly material as to when it happens, because my understanding is the part, the purpose of Part One is really to select the architect and the designer that we like the most, and, or that the building committee and the town council reviews. And arguably, I imagine they could redesign or do something that creates a schematic if we were to tell them a different location. But I do think it's important for the building committee to, at some point in the process, consider other locations. I just don't know that having those bids, consider other loca, so my proposal would be to delete the phrase "and other locations" in that Number Three, but then to add somewhere else in the charge to consider locations, other locations.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Patty, because I think those are good comments. I just want to make sure that, you know, when we talk about other locations, and I think it's, and I think you're saying something completely, a different location off of this site, because there could be a new building on the site, but a different location within the Farmington, so.
In that existing site.
Correct. So the campus that we live here today, or the school it has today.
Right.
That it could be somewhere within that site, not necessarily where the school is today, but somewhere there. So, but this other location you're referring to, Patty, is, we don't want to be in this site, potentially, or some, they're coming back, the building committee's coming back saying, we need to find a different location. That's what you're referring to, right?
I think, yes.
Building a brand-new school somewhere else.
If there's a brand-new school in a different location, yes, because I think we need to be able to consider whether or not another location is feasible, whatever, whether the town can acquire it, or the cost, or whatever the case may be.
Go ahead.
Well, one of the things, though, that I think probably should be included somewhere along the lines is that, that this building committee should start doing some due diligence about possible, the potential of where the land would be. So if it's, I think that in Part One, maybe that's another part of the charge that says that the building committee starts, you know, it's, it's really not the building committee, it's directing the staff to start looking at different pieces of land and vetting different, different things, if there's even anything available, because then, then it's just going to slow down the process when you have to do Phase Two, where the council has to figure out a piece of land. So I think this building committee, as part of their charge, could start evaluating where land would be. I mean, and they could, the owners' rep could help us with that. How much land do you need? What's, how much site? What's the topography of it? Think those different things that would be helpful for us. And if we had an owners' rep on board early, they could probably help us with that, because, you know, and the building committee, hopefully they have, you know, expertise in that, whether how much land you actually need. We could go through our town land, you know, how much, you know, can we fit it in, you know, those types of things.
Yeah, it would seem to me as though it would be the, actually yours, the staff's looking at it to begin with. What's available in town? Are there prices? Are there properties we already own? I don't, I can't tell you that right now, but if that's a possibility, then what are they? I would think it would be the staff and owners' rep that would start that, while the committee is picking their, the people that they want, the 10 or four and down to two. While they're doing that, look at possibilities in the town, you know, and decide. Paul, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think it's a good point, Patty, and I know we've kind of talked about this in the past, and after we talked about it, I was trying to think of a good solution to this, because I agree with you. One thing I thought of, but I don't think it's a good idea, is we could, because this is for pricing purposes competitively anyways, is we could pick a hypothetical solution, ask for that design based off that. The downside to that, of course, is no matter what that solution is, there's going to be someone who doesn't like it, and even though it's just for pricing, it could create some kind of controversy. So another thing I thought of is, if we gave, and I know we haven't done it yet, but we could, is some kind of assumption, saying just some hypothetical parcel of land, 10 acres, flat, you know, and we give them a list of 10 variables to assume, just to see what a true new building would cost, based off of a given set of assumptions that architects could go to town on then. Again, it's just for pricing purposes, for purposes of selecting a project. If it looked like that was going to be how the council was going to go, then we could get serious about, you know, okay, what pieces of land meet these requirements? Because again, the most important thing is that's apples-to-apples comparison at this point. Where it is doesn't really matter for the next couple of months. So that might be the best of both worlds, but, you know, I don't know how feasible that would, again, that would be good to talk to an owners' rep about, you know, what would architects need to know? I could give us a little bit of what they'd want to know, but talk to an owners' rep, see what 10 variables we lay out for them as assumptions as they go about designing that option.
Good. I'm not opposed to that suggestion. My only thought is, I think before we were to identify a hypothetical piece of land, we would need to know what the size was of this, of land in town, because I think what we do want to keep in mind as part of that is if we don't, say we have, I'm totally randomly guessing here, I don't know. Say we have a five-acre parcel, and a seven-acre parcel, and a 20-acre parcel. I think for the purposes of selecting a design, I do imagine that there would be some variability on how creative you might have to be to fit, to get a high school on a smaller parcel versus a larger parcel. So I think if we were going to have a hypothetical piece of land, we would need to have some ideas of the parameters of land that might be available in town, because otherwise, that hype, again, the creativity of having to put something on it.
Right. If I could just add one thing, is that, you know, the other, the former building committee, even though we didn't price something out, I mean, we somewhat talked about some of this, about a high school in another location, but as you remember from just our cemetery discussion, number one, Farmington has very little available land, and the land that is available is either very difficult to develop, or it's, it's open, it's our open space that has easements on it. And so that, it's, it's not, I, you saw what happened, you know, with the cemetery, and now this is putting a high school on a piece of property. And I would almost guarantee that even though we do have open space that we're allowed to use for municipal use, meaning that there's not total farm conservation easements and things like that, it, I don't think, in my mind, any of that was ever vetted to have a high school on it, which I'm not saying it wouldn't be, but that's a, that's a big process to, you know, that's, that's a whole other, and I'm not saying that's not a process that we maybe should have, but it's, it's not just, it's not easy. That's all I'm saying. It's not easy, so, and we'll probably more likely be buying a piece of property. And if we're buying a piece of property, are we buying a piece of property, there's so few pieces of property left, you know, are we buying a piece of property off the commercial tax rolls? Are we doing that? I mean, I know there's a piece of property, but it's in the, in the commercial land. You know, the price is high. So again, I don't think, I'm not sure I like the idea that much of kind of giving things and just saying, ah, X-square-foot building, how much does that cost? And think that that's going to be an apples-to-apples comparison, because I really don't think it is. I don't think it is.
No, I think that's a good point, too.
Go ahead, Patty.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that. Do you think it would be a better apples-to-apples comparison to have them propose a new building option on the existing FHS property? And then if later on, the building committee were to propose that it could be on a different parcel, we'd be able to use whatever they quoted for that as a way to compare?
I think so, right? I think so. Yeah. And I think, I think going back to your original concept, and whether it's the staff or using the owners' rep, I think we should start vetting it. I think we should start vetting it and seeing, again, you know, we, we have a great list of what our land is available and things like that. So I don't think it's going to be that difficult to figure out if we have anything. It's just going to be a question if any of those pieces of land are at all appropriate for, to do that. And so I think this building committee could, with the help of the staff at least, you know, because I'd like to, or the staff would like to use the owners' rep, because we would need help to be able to figure some of that out, I think.
And I think, I think what's going to be really important, too, in all this, is that the committee is coming to us and saying, this is what we're finding. And, and to keep us abreast of what's going on, so that as, as the process unfolds, if something comes up, the council's right there to say, hey, let's look at this, let's see if we can, we can look further into this piece of, you know, if something happens to come up, we're right here to work with them. So I think that's just keeping our eyes and ears open and, and letting this process start with, with what we have here, but fully knowing that we're going to look at a new school too. I think we need to make sure that that's part of this, so. CJ.
Just, I think, back to your original comment, Patty, on the, number three, on the existing FHS site and other locations. If that is in the charge, it seems like we almost need to have something on another location. If that were just changed to "or other locations," I think most of what people discussed when it was going on before was a value to being in a different location. Is it going to be a less expensive school? Is there going to be less disruption on another site? If whatever we get to in the end isn't either A, cheaper, or B, more convenient, we're probably not going to pay any attention to another site. We're not going to build it if it's more expensive and less convenient to the, to the students. So I think just putting an "or" in there might give us a little more leeway in the.
And then with the understanding, again, "or," we could start looking at, they're going to, we're going to have to look at some different pieces of land. We could start doing some due diligence on it anyway.
Good.
Yeah, so it sounds like most, if not all of us, are kind of in agreement that we should, the other locations should be at least researched or looked at by the town and possibly a partnership with the owners' rep. Do we need to actually have that in the charge, do you think, Kathy? Or can that be, does it need to be explicitly stated?
I think if you did what CJ said, what did you say, said "and/or."
Change "and" to "or."
Or, yeah, "and" or "or." I mean, I don't think it would hurt, because then it's out there in the document, and that's what, one of the things that people said that we did, we missed the last time. And so something as simple of D, and then put E, let's, you know, something along the lines of, the committee will begin to, I don't want to use the word "that," investigate.
I was going to say, consider.
Consider, yeah. To consider.
Alternate.
Alternate.
Sites.
Sites.
Everybody throwing one word.
Yeah, I like it.
So that would be E.
Yeah.
Well, is that E?
Instead of "or," other sites, though.
I would put "or." I would put "or."
Still leave that?
Yeah. I would put "or," and then just, and then just add E.
Okay.
The committee will, will begin to consider, how about, will begin to consider alternate sites?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But we still have "or" off top in three.
Yeah, so, Kathy?
I'm in the charge.
Part One, we've added an E after D. So Kathy, there's, Part Two has E, does, do we have to read?
Is that supposed to be A under Part Two?
Yes.
Oh, you don't, yeah, it should be A.
A, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It just kept on following the outline. So Part Two on our charge, that E should be A.
Oh, okay.
And then after the D, we'd add a new E that says, the committee will begin to consider alternate sites. And then we'd go to Part Two, A, and then go from there.
Okay. Actually, I don't think you need the A, because there's no B.
True.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
Get rid of that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes.
Just my thought on the, talking about other sites. I think what's key here, and the reason why we're, main reason why we're talking about it, is because it came out as a part of the survey and community feedback, that, you know, did they look at it? They didn't look at it? So I just think it comes down to communicating when the vetting is done, if there's some document, and some, you know, transparency there about, this is what we looked at, these are the pros, these are the cons, and when the building committee made a decision about whether or not to further investigate that or not, these are the reasons why. And then that kind of puts that to bed or brings it forward.
Right. Right, and I think it would be helpful, too, because one of the things that they talked about, not whether it would happen or not, is that even if we had, let's just say we had to buy, and it was a relatively expensive piece of property, but if our pricing that we got for a school on this site came out at X dollar, and it wasn't as much as we anticipated, and then you knew, you could, you would, could afford to maybe buy a piece of property at the same price, and then the disruption and some different things. And that, I think, is what the public said that we didn't do last time. And so I think that, you know, whether or not, I think that would, is somewhat unlikely that's, that's going to happen, but at least we can, we can vet it and then have a document that shows what the outcomes were.
And I think that's one of the things that we were all trying to do, is to make sure that we are addressing all the issues that came out in the survey. I mean, one was, what does it cost to maintain the building, just the way it is? And is that going, I mean, there was a skepticism, you know, is it going to be more eventually? Does it cost more? Is it going to be less? Is it going, you know, there was just, there were a lot of other questions. So what we're trying to do in this charge, what we've all looked at it for, is to try to address any issue that the public, you know, talked about. And that's, just as Beth said, and we've, we're all talking about, all these are, are issues to address and put to rest, one way or another, so. Other things.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just follow up on CJ's "or"?
Yeah.
I want to make sure I understand. So the concept, as I understand, is that it would be up to the building committee to decide whether it would be completing a new building option on the existing FHS, or whether, so when they're sending out the RFP to the designers, the RFP itself, it could be up to the building committee to decide whether it says existing FHS or other location, or both. Because, again, I'm concerned that if you have a, a design firm come back with one on existing FHS and one on another location, it's not the same comparison point.
No, I think it's, it's a different comparison, but if they came in with two different plans and said, this is the plan we could do on the existing site, and I've got Plan B that's on a different site, first off, if the plans cost identical amounts, I think we discount the one on the additional site, because we have a cost to that. on a different site, first off, if the plans cost identical amounts, I think we discount the one on the additional site, because we have a cost to that. If it's significantly less expensive, I think then we see, okay, what are the costs of that property? Where is it? You know, people talked about Tunxus at one point, you know, if that were available, what would be the cost? And then I think we'd have to do that next step. So, it would be, I don't know, whether we'd go through the town to figure out cost, to make it more comparative. But it might be no one even looks at another site, because they say, this is a fine site for building, and it's not, it's going to be an issue. But I, I appreciate the point. I think it's at that point, we then have to figure out the cost of the property, because we don't know what they're potentially going to come in at.
I, I also think, one of, if I understand, kind of, this is a new process, and I don't know if it would happen or not, but kind of leaving it vague, because I think part of the, I mean, we want apples-to-apples to an extent, but if for some reason, an architect came through and did a little bit of homework and said, listen, why not, you could do this for a new school, and blah, 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 I think not tying their hands, and then, you know, we give some flexibility, because I think the whole purpose is, is to get different ideas, competition, and new things. So, I think keeping it like an "and/or," and then we could, and then we could start vetting some different things. Again, I, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to hit every single bullet to, you know...
Probably not.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not going to be able to cover everything, and there aren't going to be every option, but depending, and again, at this point, it depends how many come in, you know, are actually coming in with plans. If we have only two that show up to give us plans, a lot of this won't even be an issue for us. But I think this does give us somewhat flexibility, hopefully. And then we'd have to take that next step to see, okay, what's the additional cost?
Other questions? Go ahead Beth.
I have a question about the do-nothing or maintaining the current FHS facility option. Do we have a timeframe on that? Did I see a timeframe somewhere? So, this is going to be part of the competitive bidding? Paul might want to jump in here, but...
Yep.
So, that means for as many responses as we get, we'll get some sort of figure or proposal for what it would look like to maintain the current facility over a certain period of time?
Right. Well, we, if we shortlisted, we'd only get two.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And that, does that have a timeframe? Would we put a timeframe on that? Would that be up to the building committee, or...
You mean, maintaining for like 50 years or whatever? I think that that's a standard, that the owner's rep or someone, the more we talk about this, I think it would be helpful to flip-flop that, to have the owner's rep help us on some of this too.
Do, do we just attack, tack on to what Beth is saying? Isn't that part of the ad hoc finance committee recommendation of kind of putting a timeframe of 30 years?
Thirty years, yeah.
Thirty years.
Yep.
And I guess to further add on to what you're saying Beth, is, at least what I'd like to see is, you know, that's the cost to fix what's broken. Fix leaking roofs, fix broken chairs, fix ADA that's not compliant. And by the way, if, if, you know, fix what's broken mechanically, but by not doing a comprehensive approach, you know, we're not getting a green mechanical system, what are the additional costs over that timeframe that we incur by just doing those minimums? That should be part of that option, I think, the way I see it, because those are real costs that we're going to continue to have if we go with that option.
And I think that's with the building committee, when we go out for the RFP, we're going to make it a lot more than just maintain the current facility, you know?
Okay.
But we could add, if you wanted, 30 years, but I would just hold that and just, until the building committee does it.
As long as it's been there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the same, it comes back with the same timeframe. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Comments? Oh, Erica.
Uh, yeah, I think most people know what this means, but could you just explain, just for, you know, there's probably some people in the public that might not know exactly what net municipal cost means. Could you define that for the public?
How, I think we've defined it is that because most of these building projects, we're very hopeful that we're going to get state aid, that it's what the actual cost that the town is going to pay. So, the town is going to, their actual dollars, not including state dollars. So, if, if we're going to get, if the project is, if the town is going to pay $100 million, but you're going to get $20 million in aid, then really it's, it's either, you can have $120,000, $120 million project, but the net cost, you're only going to be $100,000. Do you underst, I don't think I explained that very well. Let's see, try it again.
Isn't that cost the town is paying? The initial cost, the cost of the project, less what we're getting in grants and...
Right, exactly.
Funds.
Right, thank you. Much better than they.
Well, and one, I guess to your point Ed, I think one upside to focusing on that number is, that will help architects, because one variable here is, it's not a fixed amount of what our reimbursement grant is. We, there's a range, and I think there's some creativity that can be applied that can increase that cost. So, if an architect finds some creative ways to get a higher reimbursement rate, we might be getting a much better project for the same Farmington dollar that we're spending. So, I, I really like that wording. I guess just kind of tack on to that.
So, I just had one other chart that I just wanted to go through, you know, our facilities and financial ad hoc committee did make a lot of recommendations, and I left, I think I left it at your place, and I also have it on the screen. But I think with all the work that they've, that they did, and that, that the council approved their report, I wanted to go through it, and this would be, again, something that would go, a list of recommendations for the new building committee, whether it's Phase One or Phase Two. And any recommendations that was relevant to setting up the new charge, we, I've put in. So, we, if you remember, we did process, communication, and financial. So, I'm just going to hit the ones that are included in the charge. So, in the process, it was to generate competition, explore engaging multiple firms in the design process and project cost to address the statement and needs, Option A or B. Check. I think that's in the charge. The next one is include a new building option and determine the cost on the existing Farmington High School site and other locations. I think that it's included in Part One of the charge, and I think we're going to have to continue to make sure that, what we just discussed, that with the new, on another site too. The next one is, if you go down the page, require the architect to include the cost for the do-nothing, and we've changed that to maintaining the current Farmington High School facility for a 30-year option, as well as the option to renovate, and to determine the baseline. So, we have that in our charge. I put in communication, just to increase the number of town newsletters. I'm crossing my fingers, but if the budget passes, that's one thing that we have tried to do, and we've accomplished that. On the financial, it, the council, it's a debt forecasting. I know that many of you were involved in Joe's forecasting, and that the, the building committees, the two ad hoc committees saw that. One of the things I said is that the council should have a debt forecast presentation before Part Two of the charge, before Part Two is done, we should, again, have another presentation from Joe, and that was recommendation from the financial ad hoc committee. And then the next thing was, is that in char, in the charge of the committee, the town council should require periodic reports from the building committee throughout the process, including financial projections. And I wrote two things, is the council recharge, will recharge the committee, Phase Two, and receive reports from, we have two council liaisons on it. So, I would think that between the two council liaisons, we are matching that goal of the committee to make sure that we're getting reports back, the council's getting reports. The rest of the items is something that we're going to try to continue keeping a spreadsheet on, and that most of them, we've put that, the new Farmington High School building committee would have to complete some of those tasks. So, I think this would be helpful for the committee to keep track of it, and that we, again, going back to, this is things that this committee learned from the public, from all our meetings, and it's, I think, a valuable document that we should continue to not lose track of what this document said and what the building committee and the council should do. And that's all I have.
Any other comments? And I just want to thank the committees that have brought us to this point. There's been a lot of work done to get here tonight. We had the survey done, we had the financial committee, we've had members of the public involved, and we've had the Board of Ed involved, and Kathy Greeter, and then of course Kathy Egan and her staff, Kathy Blonsky, excuse me, and her staff with getting us to this point tonight. So, we will have, as we go along, we will have a timeline of how fast this is going to work as far as getting the RFQs, RFPs, and, and how this is going to unfold. But my expectation, I think the councils is, that we're going to get going right away and, and, and get started with this, so. Anyway, any other comments or from the...
Do we need a formal motion to make...
I was going to say, would you like me to summarize a friendly, a friendly amendment? So, you don't have to go through them.
Yes.
Okay. That Part One adds Section E, the committee should begin to consider and do diligence on considering other sites for the, for the high school. Part Two, remove the E. And Part One, B3, change the word "and" to the word "or." And then on the flow chart, reverse boxes two. Okay.
And can I just, I, and just, so we're just clear about the flow chart. The flow chart's going to be a working document, so, again, everyone understands that, that the committee's going to do it, and I think we'll move that around for the start, but then we're going to add, and the, the committee's going to, you know, it's going to be a working document.
Okay. Okay.